First off, we'll start by welcoming everybody. This is our Monday morning briefing for the Mason County Commission. For the week of October 25th, we're going to go ahead and start off with support services and Frank Pinter. Frank?
Good morning, Commissioners. The first couple of items we have are from Jennifer. Take home vehicle we pay in budget updates. Jennifer, if you would go.
Thank you, Frank. Good morning, Commissioners. So the first thing that we have that Frank mentioned is the 2022 take home vehicle assignments. So we have requests for Kelly Frazier, Cynthia Brewer, Jeremy Seymour, Rod Leroux, Grant Deschon, Pete Medcalf. Oh, I spelled his name wrong too. Sorry, Pete. And Michael Lieberg. And we, this is an annual, annual thing, you know, just the employees that take home vehicles that have the special equipment and get called out and live within, I forget how many miles it is within the county, but these employees all qualify. So I would like to ask for permission to place on the November 9th consent agenda to get these signed.
There are no new people on this list?
Just new people in, in positions that had vehicles prior to.
Commissioners, I feel you. We are good to put that forward?
Looks good to me.
Yeah, no issues.
Okay, let's make that happen, Jennifer.
Great, thank you. The next thing that we have is the out of class pay and this again is an annual thing. We bring forward all of the asks for the next budget year. And we have Todd Cannon, Josh Luck, Jeannie McFarland, Grace Miller, and Anna Smith, who all receive out of class pay. And none of these employees are new. We actually have a couple that have been taken off because their positions have been reclassed. And I would like to ask to place these on the November 9th consent agenda as well.
Commissioners?
All good with me?
Yep.
Okay, going through it. Let's make it happen.
Thank you. So the next thing that we have is an overview of the 2022 proposed budget, the third draft and where we're sitting right now. So the first thing that I have is the internal allocation. So I had made an error on the original internal allocation that I had presented back in, I believe it was like June of this year with the other rates and I had attempted to make a quick fix on that when I had turned in the budget level three. And so the original the original internal allocation was the receivable amount to non-departmental was going to be 1,750,0215. And I had corrected it or made a quick fix correction. And so what was presented in the budget was 1,638,565. And so when I went back and did the actual correction correctly, it went down or went up to 1,706,612. And so so I need to add into the revenue side of current expense under non-departmental 68,047. So our total revenue, if you look at the general fund, the 2022 summary proposed budget, our total revenue should be 53,532,558 after I add in that 68,047 difference. And so the total general fund removing beginning fund balance and ending fund balance comes to 39,532,558 rather than the 39,464,511 that's shown on the sheet. So any questions about that? Okay, great. So moving on to the expenditures, so considering everything that we have moved in so far into the budget level three, the expenditures in salaries and benefits are now 28,600. And I'm sorry, I'm reading off the 2021 adopted budget. Sorry. The 2022 proposed budget would be adding the 68,047. So scratch that that I stated previously.
Nervous today, Jen?
I just had a, I've been working on the ER and R rates, which I'll get to in a minute. So I'm a little bit scattered here. So the salaries and benefits, 29,689,632 is the amount in the 2022 proposed budget. After everything that we have added previously, and then the operating 13,85,579 for a total expenditures of 42,775,211. And the revenues are 40,326,859. So again, add that 68,047. Sorry for the confusion on that. On the special funds, on the 2022 proposed budget, we have 99,180,266 for revenues and expenditures for the special and other funds. And so the grand total of all funds, 161,7125 in both revenues and expenditures. So a couple of things that I wanted to bring up today, the lobbying services for the Gorst Coalition. We had added 5,000 into the 2021 budget in a, in an amendment. And that is not in the 2022 budget, but I believe that's a multi-year contract. So that's something we should probably add. So just wanted to get.
I would think so. Commissioners, are you in agreement?
Yeah, no, I think that's, that should be right.
Okay. And did you want me to add that in? Or do you want me to reduce something else and and add that?
Right now, I just say add that in.
Added in, okay.
That's my, Commissioners, you comfortable with that?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing that I have is the roads equipment list. So they did provide me with an equipment listing. And the equipment list shows 1,890,000. And the list that's included in the budget briefing is not prioritized, but they did send me a listing that is prioritized. And their priority list is about 980,000 worth of equipment, which is more in line with what they normally spend on an average year. And I can, I can get that, the averages that they, they expend normally, if that would be helpful to you.
Yes, please.
That would be, Jennifer, maybe could you look back in previous years, just to take a look at, I'd like to see their averages, if that would be okay?
Of actuals, though.
Yeah.
Because we've done a lot over the years of numbers. Yeah.
Sure, I'll send you maybe from like 2015 to 2020, what they've expended in those years.
That would be great.
I'll do that today. The things that they have on their priority list, I'll send that to you as well. They have the front end loader, the chipper, four plow and dumps, tractor and low boy trailer, three axle pup trailers. So those are the priorities. And I'll send you their priority list as well.
Thank you.
I did receive from them some rates, some ER and R rates, but they didn't tie out to the, the budget that they had sent. So we still have some work to do on that. So I'm working on finalizing their ER and R rates from my perspective, and I'll send those out today as well, later on today to you to take a look at and to Frank. And Public Works as well.
Can I see Mark in Frank's room? Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark, welcome.
The next thing that I have, the sales and use tax, the EDC and Belfast Sewer requests. So EDC has sent me their, their request and it's the same as last year, 90,000. And Belfast Sewer is in our budget the same as last year. And so I'm anticipating that they'll be sending their application to me and I'll brief those next week. But I just wanted to let you know those were coming. The applications for 90,000 and then 450,000.
Find out, we're going to have hookup fees that are coming in because of the construction. Find out what exactly we're doing with those and maybe not this year, but on the next year, it may help to offset some of the monies that we put in. Or maybe we can continue doing what we're doing and then utilize that money to pay off some of the debt. Something to consider, Commissioners.
So do you mean increase what they're receiving from sales and use tax?
The Belfast Sewer part, I'm just saying, when they bring in the big money, we may change numbers in the future. They've got all these hookups that are occurring out there right now. Not for today, but I'm not saying do anything today. I'm just saying to keep track on it because we may decide how to handle that, that money.
Okay. Okay, so the next thing that I have is on the fire marshal in in community services. So they have a budget ask of 40,000 and Commissioners, you would ask for them to bring back, I think salary comparisons. And so they're working on that. And right now it's at 10,000 in maintenance level, but they always expend more than that. So do you want to leave that there or do you want to think about that some more or have them, have them bring back those salary comparisons?
Any opinions, Commissioners?
I would mind looking at the salary comparisons, but I'd also appreciate Mark's input as well, since he's coming on board. It's always good to see, get a fresh set of eyes and a fresh opinion, too.
Dave, I see you click on there. Commissioners, you mind if I let Dave in this conversation? Any objection? Dave, please.
Yeah, sure. Just, just to kind of update. So there's, there's two pieces of the fire marshal part of that. So we have a contract with the Mason County Fire folks, Fire Chiefs. And that's, there's an increase in the budget for that because we do expend more in that every year for fire investigation. We do that than what's spent in the budget. It's a requirement that we do that. We're looking to bring in a full-time fire marshal, which will change the nature of that contract. So we've already talked to the Fire Chiefs. They understand that that might change as we go into bringing in a full-time fire marshal. Then maybe not all those investigations will go out through the Fire Chiefs Association. So once we get down this road a little further, we'll be able to go look at that contract and then work with Fire Chiefs.
Questions?
Quick comment. I just think it's, it's, I think it's pretty cool that we're bringing on a fire marshal full time. I think it's going to be necessary. We're going to grow. We're not, we're not slowing down. So.
I can think of a few phone calls I will no longer get, somebody being mad that we don't have one.
Oh, Randy, you enjoy those phone calls.
Yeah. At least I know where I stand on those. Okay, any questions on it agenda? Do you have any questions still that are outstanding from us that you'd like to hear?
Not at this time on, on the fire marshal. So we've covered the lobbying services. So the next thing that I have is the veterans contract. So we're working on drafting that, but just have a couple of questions. And this is with Crossroads Housing. So we have the 10% administration fee that was in the North Mason Resources contract. Do you want to keep that 10% administration fee in the Crossroads?
Yeah, and I think the, the term was supposed to be up to 10% and not 10% administration fee. Because they were supposed to try not to take that money.
Okay, we'll make sure that it says up to 10%.
Commissioners, do you agree with that? Kevin, you're muted.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's just tough. I mean, obviously, you know, 10% of 5,000 is, is only 500. I don't know that.
10,000 now.
Oh, so, okay, $1,000. Um, it's, you know, so, yeah, I mean, I don't, that's fine.
Okay.
I kind of like to be, I'd be curious to see if Crossroads needs that. Um, I think it might be, might be good just, just to ask them because I know that they are getting extra monies from the federal government and, and so I don't know whether they've had to hire new people or anything. It might be fun to just get a, an update from Crossroads, sometimes invite them to a a briefing just to see how they're doing and, and see if there's any ways, other ways that we can help.
Yeah, not on this particular issue, but overall, all and overall, that would be nice to, Mark, maybe you can take note of that and bring that to us in the future. But again, that's why we said up to, they may need it, they may not. If they don't, this way they don't have to just take it for that. It can go right into the services.
Yeah, we can, we can leave it at 10, up to 10% and that way they don't have to take it. Does that sound?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then the last contract that we had written or that we followed with North Mason, we had fronted the money and then had them prove the expenditures. And that's how we've been doing a lot of the other ARPA funding contracts as well. Would you like to do this one upfront or reimbursable?
I'd like to do it upfront.
Hey, that's fine. I think that they'll, they'll, they'll follow through with the reporting requirements.
Yeah, we have a good history with them. I have no issue with that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the, the last thing, and this is probably more a question of our ARPA group. But I wanted to make sure that you weigh in Commissioners, the category for ARPA funding. So this can fall into a few different categories. Either negative economic impact under aid to nonprofit organizations or other economic support, or it can fall under services to disproportionately impacted communities.
Which is the easiest to prove.
I don't know. I mean, I, my initial reaction is to go with the nonprofit organization, aid to nonprofit organizations. But, but it's definitely something we should talk about at our, our ARPA group.
Yeah, well, because it is specific for a specific purpose, it may be a little hard just to say nonprofit. But I want to keep it as simple as possible so that if we get audited or when we get audited, we have protections. So I'd be open to however anybody decides to do it. I'm going to be open to it if your recommendation is, this is our safest way to handle it.
Okay, we can take a look at that as a group and then come back with a recommendation in the drafted contract to you.
Okay, but again, hopefully we can do this as soon as possible. They have that stand down and stuff coming shortly.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get it briefed to you by next Monday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. We, we need to decide on if we're going to do a resolution for non-union and across the board increase. And I just wanted to get you thinking about that, Commissioners.
Yeah, I'd say, do you need that now or you want to do that during the budget briefing? I think we already, we've, I'll just kick in. We've, we've set up a past precedents that that's how we've done it. And, and we've continued to keep everybody up. I remember when I first came in here, they were years and years without anything. We haven't had that issue. And because of that, we also haven't had some of the hatred stuff that came along with not giving anything for five years or so. Five years is an understatement, Frank. Is that about right? Yeah. So I'd like to see us continue doing what we're doing according to past precedents. Just keep moving. Commissioner Shutey, what are you thinking?
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, I think that's, I think it's good for keeping parity. So, and Jennifer, have you been planning for that in our, in our budget already? Or is that going to increase the numbers you already presented?
It will increase the numbers. I don't ever put in numbers that have not been approved in a resolution into the budget for salaries.
How did we, how did we wear that in our guidelines? Do we address that at all in our guidelines this year?
I think we just said that non-union may receive an increase.
Frank, how did we do it internally? Did, did we put it into our budget? I think we all did, right?
No, it's not in the budget.
No, in yours, in what you guys put forward, your in your proposal.
You mean the preliminary budget?
Yes.
No, it's not included because there's nothing definitive that the board has said. They want to move it up 25%, 2.5% or what have you.
Okay, what about the, have you seen it in the other departments?
Only the union contracts that have been approved.
Is that something in the future that we could address at guideline time, just for simplicity sake? I mean, I, you know.
I think we need to make our decision earlier and then yes.
That would be so awesome.
So if the decision is made at the time the budget guidelines are put out, then that can be included in the preliminary budget.
I, to be, to be completely candid with you, I was operating under the assumption that that's, that's what we did. Immaterial at this point, I guess, but it, it probably does affect decisions than on PLRs. I'd rather, you know, I'd rather cook that in early and know, you know, I'd rather deal with that first than adding new staff.
Commissioner, you're not far off from me either. I actually thought that that was in there. I don't know how I missed that it wasn't. And I assumed that that was part of, part of the maintenance that we had a, a set amount. I know we had discussed it. We had the discussion of the number. So I just kind of assumed that that's what we were doing. And if we weren't going to do it, we take it out. That's what I thought, but.
Yep. And the discussion, discussion about the number was just that, a discussion. There wasn't any direction from the board specifically as to how to do proceed.
I agree.
It seems like it should be aligned with, with the, the union contracts.
Well, only because, only because we've kept everybody in parity. It didn't used to be that way. That's why it wasn't set up that way. But we've been really good at keeping everything together. And if we can do that again this next year or so, Mark, be able to continue.
Mark, is your, is your hand cramping yet from?
Yeah. No, I'm good.
Okay, so we'll bring that forward during a budget workshop? Is that what I'm hearing? Maybe next week?
Or are, I, I don't know. I think what I'm saying is let's put it in for the budget workshop to be a, a agreed upon to move in there. Because I think we do have agreement. I think we have that set number that we've done with everybody. And I think we do have agreement amongst commission from the past to move forward with it. What we just don't have is it already in the game because we're going to need to see that number for our final decisions. So I'd say bake it in now. And then, you know, final approval at the end. Commissioners, do you agree with that?
Yeah, I'd like to see those numbers in by our next workshop.
Yeah.
And what would the number?
Jennifer, I'll convey that.
Thank you.
Okay. So Commissioners, the, the actual, going back to the beginning of our budget workshop or budget briefing, sorry. The beginning revenue number for current expense is adding in the 68,047 is 40,394,906. And the revenue, including beginning, beginning fund balance, after adding that 68,047 and is 61,894,906. So just wanted to clarify that.
Say it one more time, please. Six, 61 million.
894.
94.
Thank you. You're welcome. So attached is the PLRs and the ones that we have approved and the ones that are outstanding. Would you like to go through any of those now? Or do, do you want to wait until next week's?
Yeah, Commissioners, do you want to do this now? Or you want to actually set up for a separate budget workshop so we can go ahead and focus solely on this?
I think it should be on its own.
Yeah, agreed.
Let's do that, please. I agree because I, I don't want to confuse any of this.
Okay, great. Then the next thing that I have is an update on our electronic funds transfer payments through AP. And this is something that has been a long time coming. We are going to start doing electronic funds transfer payments. The auditor's office is, and so we, we want to add this into our financial policy that we're going to allow this. We've been sending out information to vendors or the auditor's office has been doing that, asking them if they would like to receive electronic funds transfers. Is there any questions, comments? I'll be bringing that, that forward hopefully next Monday if I can cram it all in.
Questions, comments?
No.
Just get down with your bad self and bring it on.
Okay, so that's all that I have. Thank you.
What else you got, Frank?
Jennifer, don't you have the EDC contract?
Mentioned it.
I do have it, but I, I received it late and so I didn't do a budget briefing. And so I'm going to bring it forward next week along with with Public Works request.
Thank you. Our next item is Nicole with the non-represented medical contribution request.
Good morning. Um, so yeah, we, on the, for the briefing, we're just requesting approval to set an agenda, an agenda, my agenda item on November 9th to, for the approval to increase the 2022 non-rep medical contribution by 52 per month. From 1362 per month to increase to 1,414 per month. So, and I want to make a correction on my briefing document. It says per RCW 3.16.070. That should actually be RCW 3, 36.16.070. And so this RCW is the applicable RCW that gives guidance for the Board of County Commissioners shall fix the compensation for all employees. And currently the collective bargaining agreements also have that current increase of 52 per month on bringing their monthly medical contribution to 1,414 per month.
Commissioners, in order to keep parity, I think we, I would think we go forward. Any comments or?
Yeah, I would, yeah, be supportive of this also. Just is, did, did we handle this the same way we handled? Okay, so this needs to be factored in additional to.
Correct.
For our next budget workshop. Okay.
I can see Kevin's impression setting in.
Thank you.
Good, good to meet a minute, Commissioners.
Yeah, I got it. Hey, what do you got next?
Next item is TJ in regards to the off-site backup storage.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So some time ago, Commissioner Netherlands asked me to research and find a decent solution for our off-site backup storage. After looking at multiple vendors, I'm suggesting we go with our current backup vendor, which is Unitrends. So they offer a cloud backup storage solution. It fully integrates into our current system. And it is also hardened in such a way that any kind of ransomware attack, our backups basically can't be compromised in the cloud. It is a three-year cost at 63,376. And we would need a budget supplemental to, to do this. Um, and we would need a budget supplemental to, to do this.
That came even cheaper than we thought it was going to. Uh, did Kevin, Commissioner Shutey, this go through your committee?
Yeah, so TJ did um, brief the IT steering committee and there was consensus to support this there and I think it's, I think it's the right decision.
I would agree. Commissioner Trask, do you have any problem with putting this forward and protecting us?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think it's been a long time waiting.
Thank you, TJ. Like I said, this came in cheaper than what you and I had discussed by quite a bit, so.
Yeah, yeah, I was happy to see that as well.
Yeah. All right, so go ahead and put it on the agenda and let's make this thing a reality.
All right, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, TJ. Um, next item is the discussion in regards to the purchase of the PUD three property. That's that parcel next to the prison. So after considered um, review and, and research. It was determined that the back third of that property. Oh, about uh, five or seven acres. Is potentially wetland. There's a small stream that runs through the property. And would not be available for use within, for the jail. Uh, for a jail expansion project in the future. So the question I have for the board is. Do we want to purch, we don't have any contracts or any commitments. But do we still want to purchase it simply for the property and the buildings that exist on the parcel currently? It would not be available for utilization as a option for a jail.
Question I have is uh, the uh. Have you been in contact with PUD? Were they aware of this wetlands? And if not, would they reconsider a price?
I have, I have been in contact with them. They were aware of the wetland potential. Um. But I have not discussed um, negotiating a reduced price. So they, they. The price, I'm sorry, the price that they had was a, an appraisal that incorporated. The as-is component of the land.
So it did incorporate the potential wetland in the appraisal?
Correct.
Did it spell it out in the appraisal?
No.
Then it did not truly do it.
So it incorporated the parcel as-is.
Yeah. Because that, when there's wetland in the appraisal, it's, you know, put it in there for delineation. It's, it's specified usually, so. Commissioner Trask, go ahead.
Yeah, how much of the property is usable then?
About half to a little over a half. Not enough for what's there plus five plus acres for a jail. And that, that was reviewed by KMB.
Yeah, unless there was a uh, a wetland delineation program which could be set up too. That's always possible. Depends on what type of stream you have back there though.
Well, and then some other items have come forward, which is that we could talk to the Department of Corrections. And swap some property. So upfront on the one oh two component. If we were to say take five acres of their parcel in that corner. And swap for five acres of, of um. Wetlands that they don't use anything for anyway. Um, we may be able to come with enough bar property to do a jail in the future. But uh, I haven't started that conversation if that's the direction the board wants to go.
So correct me if I'm wrong, we have, did. Did we do a resolution? Saying that we would purchase this? So we're gonna have to re, re, rescind that, right?
Correct.
And then maybe in the future, we, we do a little bit more. Research before bringing it forward.
Yep, so my recommendation would be to rescind the resolution at our next commission meeting on the ninth. And then do more considerably more research. And conversation and discussion and negotiation. With both PUD three and or Department of Correction and then come back with a potentially viable option in the future.
Yeah, but at the same time, if you're talking to the PUD, it, it, you know, there is use to us regardless of the prison. Uh, or, or the, or the jail. And you know, I, I would never want to see this county purchase property with the idea that we may be a swap here, maybe a swap there. Because if that stuff doesn't happen by the time it's over with, that we set ourselves up in a bad position. I'd like to see us purchase it if we're gonna purchase it at a price relevant to its value for what it actually is now. Uh, with us being able to utilize it and uh. Then if we can benefit from it later, great. If we can't, great. But uh, I'm probably, I'd rather. You know, I was probably, because we set a price on that resolution, right?
Correct.
So we're gonna have to, in my opinion, we're gonna have to rescind that resolution anyway.
Correct.
Have that further conversation, but I just think that we need to be open to uh, just purchasing it as is without all the drawn out stuff if we can get it at the right price.
Again, so my recommendation is to rescind the resolution. Uh, I would go back with PUD three to see if they would negotiate on the price. Given the circumstances that Mason County is looking to utilize it at the moment. With the opportunity that maybe in the future we can leverage and do a property swap. With the um, with Department of Correction.
I wouldn't even include that in the negotiation because it has nothing to do with them.
Right. I, I didn't mean to include it in the negotiation.
Yeah, just see what we can do about the price for as it is with only that much usable land. Uh, not that it's an as-is thing, but this is how much is usable land. We're looking at it. If we can find a way to, to change that, it's gonna cost money to change it. It's gonna cost money to bring in somebody to do a wetland delineation to figure out what kind of swaps we're gonna do. None of that's free, so. The value of the land, in my opinion, is the value of the land that we could use uh, with the other. Being a nice backyard.
Right, but at the minimum, we need to rescind that resolution.
Yeah, I think so. Do you agree, commissioners?
Yeah, you know, and I, I, I think there's value for this parcel potentially for us beyond a jail site. Um, you know, and so that was, I mean, it was, the, the jail would have been. Um, you know, having it as a location for a jail would have been, you know, an added benefit, but there's certainly value to it to us. Currently um, with our storage needs and, and just. I mean, we're just constantly chasing square foot. Um, you know, and so it's, I don't think it's a bad thing to add. To the county inventory if we can, if, if we can, you know. Get a reasonable, you know, um, agreement with them on some of the, you know, with some of these changes that, that we now know, so.
Commissioner Trask.
That's basically what I, I said previously and so I think, and then I, I think what I would like to do also is recommend that we move a little bit slower before doing resolutions so that we don't have to rescind them. Um. Or maybe, you know, phrase the resolution so that it doesn't, it's not specifically mentioning. You know, a jail or, or whatever, because Commissioner Shutey is right, there's, there's a lot of potential for a lot of property. We, we have, we have needs.
Yeah, well, just a thing for uh. You know, staff on this one, I don't think it was because they mentioned jail or anything like that. It's just the idea that it came up that there was a potential wetland that we sent people out there, found that it was. You'll find that with anything we do. Uh, in the beginning, we were in a hurry to, to grab this property. Uh, and I want to remind everybody, I don't think we were talking jail when we first were talking about this anyway. That came up afterwards, but we were starting to put some hopes on that.
Okay, I'll, I'll move forward then on the ninth. We'll rescind the resolution and then continue moving forward with. Potential notifications to the purchase.
Thank you. What else?
Next item, human resources recommendation for district court. Last week Judge Steele had brought forward a reorganization for. District Court by adding a deputy um, administrator for district court in his budget request for twenty-twenty-two. In addition to that, there was a reclass request then for the. Um. Uh, the district court administrator. And in the similar manner that the Superior Court was reorganized and restructured previously. Um, this restructure is um, comparable to that. And in that regard, uh, human, uh, HR is recommending that the. Reclassification and the reorganization be approved. Um, as was for the Superior Court model.
Wow, didn't see that one coming. Okay, commissioners?
Is that, do you have that in a? Uh, written out? Form?
Uh, yes, it was emailed to you last Thursday or Friday.
Okay, I'll take a back, I'll take a look back through.
Okay. Uh, next item.
Hold on, Frank, let me just make sure that Commissioner Trask is uh, included on this for, for, for conversations on it. What are you thinking right now in regards to what was just, just presented, Commissioner?
I appreciate you. Asking for my comment too. Um. Yeah, I too wanna, I wanna look at the, I must have missed it, my email, Frank. I apologize for that. Um. But I'd like to take a look at it and. Before I think too much.
Sure.
Yeah, it is a lot of money. Uh, it's just interesting.
So the, the annual impact just for the reclass is fifteen thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars fully loaded.
Yeah, but the, the other body.
Well, that's a budget. So I'm sorry if I, if I was misunderstood. The decision to add a body for the district of deputy county admin, um, district court administrator, that's a budget decision.
Okay.
That's not, yeah, that's my recommendation.
Yeah, you have the two of them there together. So you, you are recommending that it, that the uh, the reclass fits the definition of reclass and, and uh. Uh, believe that it, it would uh. Stand up basically, past practice. Okay. That helps me a lot because I was a little surprised that, that AIDR would come forward with saying, yeah, put a body in there just that quick. It's just usually not that easy.
No, that, that's a board decision, part of the budget process. And if the board decides to add that additional body, then the reclass request is justifiable in exactly the same way that the Superior Court Justice. Um, reorganization was modeled.
Well, with that being said, commissioners, and, and we can still hold off and do everything else, but. Off of their recommendation for that. Uh, I'm in favor of putting that part forward. Uh. Do you still want, but you haven't had a chance to read it, have you? Or did you understand it the same way I did originally, Commissioner Shutey? Were you hearing both or?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah. So I found it in my email. I guess it came out Friday afternoon and so I don't believe it's in the, the packet that was out for public review. So. I think given that, I'd like to, I'd like to hold off at least a week uh, and. And take a look and I, and I agree, I mean, I obviously adding them. An FTE is a, is a budget decision separate from the reclass. That, that makes sense. I get that. Um. You know, so.
Okay, so Commissioner Trask, are you okay with waiting uh, and rebriefing this on next week?
Oh, absolutely. I, I wanna take a good look at it and, and I agree with Commissioner Shutey to let the public see it also.
Yeah. Uh, Patty, I see that you put yourself on right now. Uh, do you have anything that's pressing you'd like to say on this or can it wait until the next briefing?
No, it can wait till the next briefing. I just wanted to clarify the, the same thing Frank did.
Okay, thank you. So we will go ahead and we will put that on our next briefing, please.
Thank, thank you, commissioners. Next item is an agreement with Community Development Block Grants. This is the CDBG grant that we agreed previously to extend. Um. For Mason County, Thurston County and Lewis County. To December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Department of Commerce has agreed to do that extension. These are the subcontracts that we incurred in that agreement, so we need to extend the subcontract recipients. For that CDBG grant and that's, that's what this. Um, this request is, is to amend the sub-recipient agreements for that CDBG block grant.
I'm in favor of moving forward. Commissioners, anything?
Yep.
Supportive as well.
Okay.
And the last item is the addition of uh, Mr. Erwin Nelson. Uh, for the Foothills Park Hosts. Diane?
Good morning, commissioners. It's as Frank said, we have Lara Nelson right now as a Foothills Park Host. And we are asking to add James Erwin. He's moving in November one.
You've already done your checks and everything else on it?
Yes, he's been screened.
Okay, I'm supportive, commissioners.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, commissioners. That's, that's all we have.
Hey, do you guys have anything for them?
Yeah.
Oh, Kevin, Shutey, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just a real quick item. So um, Frank, this came up at our Mason Transit uh, meeting last week about um, the addition of Juneteenth is a holiday. Um, can you? Can you get back to us on what our plan is? And, and there was some discussion about whether that needed to be collectively bargained or, or not. So if you have any information now, that's great. If not, if you could just bring that back to us next uh, next briefing so that. We know what the expectation is for next year.
Absolutely. I'll bring it back at the next briefing.
I did, I contacted him right away, just so you, I'm pretty sure he knows. So he does have a need, you know, you'll see. What I was saying was pretty accurate. Okay, what else do we have?
We have a letter from um, a letter to the governor from Commissioner Trask.
Yeah, so as you, as you know, I've written a few letters in the past. Um, asking the governor to include us in some of his conversations and his. Um, decision-making. This is basically just another letter. You know, letting him know what I've heard in the community, some of the concerns and maybe steps moving forward, might some suggestions to move forward. So I just wanted to know. You guys wanted to sign on or um. Wanted to make changes to it or anything like that.
Sorry, but this is the first time I actually saw it, so I'm trying to read it now. Commissioner Shutey?
Yeah, so um, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable, Commissioner, with, with you sending it with your signature. I don't intend to sign on.
Oh. Uh. Well, you guys know how I feel about sticking together as a family or not. So I myself, uh, I, I don't see an issue with it, but Commissioner, I'm going to. Uh, support. In a sense, that request from Commissioner Shutey, I don't think it'd be appropriate to have any type of split decision on this one. Uh, so if you don't mind, please uh, go ahead and send it uh, as, you know, as a commissioner.
No, no problem at all.
Again, it's, I would hope somebody would do that for me and I, I would hope we would do the same for you on that. Uh. So with that being said, I think we're in agreement that uh, thank you for writing it though. I, I don't see any issue with it that I have with it and, and. So just, just, I know it's appreciated that you're moving forward and you're doing things to try and help, Commissioner.
Yeah, part of my job.
Yeah, what else we got, guys?
That's it.
Okay, then we're gonna go ahead and move on uh, out of that one. We're running a little bit late, guys, so if we can pick it up a little bit, be appreciated. Uh, Community Services, Dave Wyndham.
Good morning, commissioners. So I'm gonna start out with saying, made a mistake earlier. My, I misspoke on the ten thousand dollars. That's an increase. For the extra help fire marshal. Not the other piece that I was talking about. So the other piece was already approved. So this is Jennifer Rose Wright. It's, so we're good. I misspoke. Uh, moving on, Alex.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I've got our environmental health fee schedule here, proposal for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, per the twenty-thirteen resolution. We are raising the CPIU for last year, which was five point two percent. Uh, but on that resolution, it limited it to five percent, so we're just adjusted down slightly. Um. And then we also round down to the nearest five every year just to um. Help keep fees kind of simplified for the public and contractors to remember and whatnot. So. Uh, just approval to forward to our next action.
Commissioners?
Uh, I'm supportive.
Yep, sounds good.
We'll make it happen.
Great, thank you. That was it.
Alex, before you leave, uh, sorry commissioners to jump in on this. I just want to compliment you on the quality of the work I've had the. The, I was gonna say opportunity to go in there and have to work with them on, on a specific issue. The professionalism, uh, the warmth of it, uh. I actually ended up going upstairs pretty damn happy being a part of Mason County and I just wanted to share with you, Alex, uh, it was very much appreciated. And as a citizen. I very much found uh, you guys to be very helpful. So, thank you.
I appreciate that. Yeah, we have some great staff here, so thank you.
And we stole the, uh, a young man from the Salmon Center. We're not stealing from Thurston, but. Poor Salmon Center because we got somebody well, good. Go ahead, I'm sorry. What do you got next?
Okay, next is Marissa Watson.
Hi, commissioners. Good morning. Good morning. Um, so the planning department just has a request to uh, place on the November ninth. Action agenda to set a public hearing for December seventh. To consider a rezone of approximately a three point two-two acre parcel from rural residential five to rural res, rural commercial two. Not in the wind, within the rural development areas. And that's in the wind, within the rural development areas. Um, you have the printouts of the maps of the aerial maps and the GIS map there. Um, that particular parcel is about two hundred and sixty feet east of the intersection of East and the Gravy Road and East Dalby Road. It's between the Chevron and Convenience Station there at the corner and the PUD one switch station. So, um, our applicant, Michael Ricketts, is just, uh, asking for a request to rezone the, the PAC unanimously approved to recommend, recommend the approval to you guys. So I'm just hoping to get it on the action agenda, um, for November night.
Wonderful. Commissioner Shutey, this is, uh, right around the corner from you. Do you see any issue that you wanna bring up?
Uh, no. I'm good with moving forward.
Commissioner Trask, you good with putting on the agenda?
Yep, sounds good.
Let's make it happen. Thank you, Marissa.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, Commissioners, that's what I have on our agenda. If I can answer any questions.
Do we have anything for Dave?
Uh, Dave, I just wanted to echo what Commissioner Nodle said. Your, your team in the entire building is amazing. They're just spot on. They're responsive. Just super happy to have them as part of the Mason County team as well.
I, I appreciate that. I really have a great team working for me here. I makes things so much easier, especially in these hectic times that we're in, is to have people that you can trust and that, that are good.
You know, it's funny is Dave actually showed up in the middle of when I was doing it. I'm curious if he thought there's a Commissioner. Oh, yeah, what's going on?
Kind of caught me in the middle of my afternoon rounds.
Yeah. And then I, like I said, I went upstairs and, uh, some of the issues that our citizens were having, uh, I spoke to Kel. It just hadn't been, uh, conveyed to them yet. But again, another issue fixed, addressed, fixed. Man, you, you gotta love that. You just gotta love that and appreciate that. And that's what Commissioner Shutey had to say. I saw him. All right. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the next one. Let's see if there's any questions? There are none. Thank you. Uh, next up, uh, is Loretta Swanson, Utilities Waste Management. And now we're early. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So first up, we have, um, the CRP for Mason Lake Road Improvement Project. And I'm not sure if Mike's, oh, he is. And this is to recommend that the board execute a resolution for this CRP and authorize the chair to sign documents so we can advertise set bid opening and award a contract for this project. And Mike's happy to elaborate if you've got questions about what we're up to.
I don't know. Do we have any questions? Are we good to go on this one?
Good.
Looks good.
Sorry, Mike.
Good job, Mike.
Go ahead, Loretta, next.
All right. Next, we have a sole source purchase. And this is for a grapple all out of the Eels Hill Solid Waste Facility. And, um, we, we need to replace the, the grapple.
Before we go to further, I'm gonna say, Mike, you know, you've always, one of the things I've enjoyed, uh, is that you definitely look for the ways to cut costs on that. You'll bring in used, if it's used, you bring in new if it's new. Because you're so open-minded, I already know that you've already done the work that's necessary on this one for myself. So you may not have to speak again. Let's see. Commissioners, do you have questions?
I do not.
I do. What's a grapple?
This is the, the piece of equipment that is used to compact our solid waste. And Richard can give you a little bit more on that. And also his team, um, with the assistance of our ERNR folks, they did a lot of research on this as well. So Kevin, we, we gotta get some kudos in there for Kevin and, and Richard on, on the research also.
Oh, my God. And Pete and Gary and just a slew of people. This is, this is actually a very nice attachment for us. It's, it's actually improved the consistency at the weights we maintain on our, on the trailers we're loading as well. So this, just to answer your question, this grapple, it's, if you look at it, it's basically, it looks like a big giant block. But it has the ability to open up and pick things up and then smash them, smash the heck out of them. Trailer, so.
Scientific language.
We're right at twenty-five tons, right at where we need to be on our, on our, uh, contract. And we've been able to maintain those within like point one zero on the tonnage. Really good job on that.
And better yet, without damaging equipment.
Yeah.
So that's a bonus as well.
Exactly.
That's a plus for sure.
Yep.
So do you have to have a special license or do, or can common folk like, you know, the three of us, can we come out and run it?
Only, only if, if, uh, the shop comes out and trains you first.
Well, you know what's funny is I would never have thought about that question, but I gotta admit, uh, if that's possible, I would sure love to go out there and I love machinery anyway. Just Commissioner Trask, that'd be funnier than heck if, uh, uh, as one commissioner to another, I, we only need to, I give you permission to go forward and make that happen for us. What do you think, Commissioner Shutey?
Uh, as long as we maybe bump up our liability. I know that you want me out there doing that.
Yeah.
My dad had a, had a construction company and, you know, side note, and so I could get up on the backhoe and the dump truck and things like that. So much fun. I have such an appreciation for big equipment, so.
Like sure, it, it is probably one of the greatest stress releases I've ever come across. It really is, uh, using big machinery and changing land. There's a feeling that comes with it. You just can't get it anywhere else.
Yep.
It certainly is satisfying, especially a good operator.
That's right.
For sure.
We're in agreement to go forward, right?
Yes.
And thank you good staff for all your hard work on that. What else you got, Loretta?
That's it in terms of, um, briefing items, Commissioners. Uh, as, as far as upcoming action items, just a reminder, we've got a hearing tomorrow for, uh, the Boyer Road Speed Limit and Orchard Beach Franchise Agreement. And coming up in mid-November, we have our hearing for the sixth year and annual construction program. And then just a, a couple of Commissioner follow-up items. We had a communication, um, from a person that was concerned about site distance up at Little Mission Creek Lane and North Shore Road Intersection. And our team went out to take a look at that. And it does appear that without pulling forward on, uh, from the stop bar, that there is some blockage of site distance there. So we're working on a solution on that. You can, you've got good site distance, um, without pulling into the lane, but certainly there are some things that we could look at to make some improvements. And then we've got some follow-up. Dave contacted DOT about the intersection of SR three hundred and Sand Hill Road and has not heard a response back there. But there was a question about whether or not an illumination warrant was met. And in his opinion, it was that and reached out to DOT to, to follow up on that.
Please stay up on that because that is a really bad intersection. And, you know, I'm always amazed how much I don't recognize that there's no lighting until somebody tells me. Uh, then you go out there and realize what the heck, this is probably one of the busiest ones. And on a curve, why would we not illuminate that? But please continue on that one.
Yep, we'll keep pressing. Mike, was there anything else on, on that? And then we had, let's see. We're working, as you know, or maybe know, out on Harstein Island. We've had some good positive feedback from, from residents out there. And we've got some follow-up on a particular site there on Point Wilson. And the team will be out taking a closer look and getting ready to, to move on that project as well. It's a, when I say project, it's really just some small work to resolve a drainage issue there.
Loretta, while you're out there, if you were to go, uh, Harstein Island, you get onto the island, you make a right, go all the way to the end of that T. Uh, there's a side issue there that I, it's been brought to my attention. I've been out there and I looked at it. And if the stop bar is the, uh, the point of which we start to recognize whether there's a side issue or not, well, then this one might be accurately a side issue. There's two trees that make it. So you have to get past the stop bar to, to see that are right there on the corner. While your folks are out there, if you could take a peek at that on the right. And it happens to be, uh, there's a dip there too. I think the dip is the greater uh, worry, but that, those two trees was brought to our attention. Now that was brought to my attention, I, I think we should send somebody to take a peek.
Okay. If you're turning south on the Island Drive, and then you said when you come to the T, Commissioner?
Yeah, you go, follow it all the way to that T. Uh, the T is where the, uh, the, the site issue is. If you look to the right, you'll see two trees are blocking the vision. Uh, you have to go pull up past the stop bar.
Okay.
To get it. I'm only bringing it up now because if we have somebody out there, maybe now's the time to take a look at that.
Okay. Good, good deal. Um, let's see, Mike, we had a couple of other things, just maybe some follow-up update on the Walnut Street and Eels Hill. And we received an award of funds for our Highway Safety Improvement Program.
Yeah, Walnut Street, we, uh, uh, we sent, uh, all the data out to Ms. Layton and have not received any, uh, response to her. So I did that like the next day. So it's been a week or so. Uh, Eels Hill, there's a slide there. We're meeting tomorrow with, uh, the property owner, no, not tomorrow, Wednesday, with the property owner to get the final, uh, easement settled there to be able to finish that repair. And HSIP Safety Enhancement Awards, we've got, uh, actually from local programs awarded, uh, Ridge Guard Rail retrofit, about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar grant. Uh, horizontal curve analysis, about seventy-three thousand dollars and signpost reflective panels. Uh, fifty-four thousand dollar grant for those. So, um, that'd be our next project. We'll be spending some of that money next year.
And those are one hundred percent, um, FedA-funded, no match required for those projects. And other than that, I think that's about it on our end. Commissioners, we're watching the Scope Home. It's due for its first minor flood alert coming up this week. So we'll keep you posted on that and, um, hopefully put our gauges, our new gauges to work here before too much longer.
And those are the ones that send you automatic, um, updates, right?
Yeah, it's a continuous update. And once we've get, we've got the, um, the survey control information, it's a web link that we want to make available to the public as well. So they can see what the, the river height is looking like. And then we'll have a, a control point that shows what the road elevation is. And we're thinking about having another line that would show at what point we would actually close the road. A real good, quick visual for the community to be able to make better plans about whether they're sheltering in place or planning evacuation or just what they're planning to do.
That's so cool.
Yeah. Yeah, nice, nice implementation for sure. We're excited to put it to work.
Anything further?
That's all from our end, Commissioners, I think. Richard and.
That's good.
Oh, oh, no, no, no. Yes, one thing further that did not show up. I apologize. This did not show up on last week's either. But we have a, um, an operator, actually, we have two operator positions that have been unfilled. And at this time, Richard and Justin are requesting to be able to fill one of our water and sewer utility operator positions. And Richard's happy to elaborate about.
This is that one that was missing?
Well, actually, we had, we, we currently have six FTEs. Um, we had seven up until April. Bob was leaving in May. So he said, well, we're not gonna hire somebody until at least the new guy gets here and evaluate kind of what he's getting into and let him decide if he really needs another person or not. He's came to the conclusion that, yeah, we can't keep up with, with, uh, preventative maintenance or even implement a preventative maintenance type schedule. And, and also with six people, if, if somebody's gone sick, they're, uh, you know, you're, you're, you're paying overtime every time. And so we're just, we'd like to advertise and, and try to fill that position again. And, uh, we're, we're working on a new schedule, a little more flexibility for the operators and a lot more coverage for us to get, get the actual maintenance and maintenance plans and preventative type things like that done during the Monday through Friday work week.
Okay, uh, Commissioners, questions?
It's already in the budget.
Yeah, we're budgeted for eight FTEs. We, we, we've been running with six since April. And, and it, it's, uh, not been fun, but, you know, we didn't, we didn't wanna hire somebody. I didn't wanna have Bob hire somebody if he wasn't gonna be here. I thought it'd be best to have Justin hire his own team. And, uh, he's finally came to the conclusion that, yeah, he really does need that other person. It's been a, a bear for him without it.
Commissioner Shutey?
Yeah, given that it's his budget and you've done your evaluation, I'm, I'm supportive of filling those positions.
Commissioner Trask, you agree?
Yep.
As do I. So let's move forward with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep, anything else?
Now that is officially it from our end.
Okay, do we have anything for them, Commissioners? We have a lot of rain and stuff coming up. Uh, a lot more issues going on. Keep us surprised, please, as things, uh, move forward. Uh, Commissioners, I tell you, for myself, I get calls from the community. I am so appreciative of Loretta and staff. I actually, uh, just take a picture, send it over to them. You'd be surprised how quickly it gets done. But, uh, as part of our jobs when we're out there, it's not part of our jobs, but sometimes we're the first ones to see it. So. All right. All right, then. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Loretta. We're gonna go ahead and move forward. Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
Uh, Cheryl, we are a little bit early. Are you, uh, ready to go on a little early?
Yes, Commissioners, we, let me get the videos, maybe the video started?
No problem. I'll go ahead and introduce you. Uh, so we're gonna go ahead and move into the Sheriff's Office. Uh, presenter is Cheryl Hilt.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. We just have one item for you this morning. That is a sole source purchase of some interview room equipment. I do have, uh, one change to make on your briefing, uh, for the recommended or requested action. This wouldn't be coming out of county ending fund balance. This would be coming out of, uh, Senate Bill five oh nine two money, which we'll have to do a budget supplemental for at the end of the year.
Okay.
I also have Detective Sergeant Rhodes here. If you have questions about what they're, what they're gonna use this for or why the sole source.
Uh, I have a different question first. Uh, Commissioner Shutey, uh, you represent us on the IT committee. Is this something that should go through them?
Yeah, I think so. We, I, I think, uh, we've been trying to get, um, Sheriff's Office staff into the next committee meeting to talk about the body camera program, uh, generally. So this would be, I think, a, a good venue to, to discuss the project a little bit. Certainly wanna see us adhere to the legislation that was passed. But just wanna make sure that everything is integrating the right way with our countywide IT program.
Yeah, just learning how to work with each other sometimes is a valuable tool. And when a piece gets left off there, uh, we may never learn how to do it if we don't do it together. I myself, I see no issue with, with this request. I just, uh, would like to see also a, uh, that it go through the, the, our new proper channels so that they can vet it also and, and come back with this, with a recommendation. Uh, do you see a time constraint issue that would, uh, challenge that, Cheryl?
I'm, I'm not entirely certain when the IT committee meets. So I, I don't, I can't answer that question. I'm not sure. Since we'd have to have this purchase done by the end of the year, if we can fit it in, I do believe that this integrates fully with the G-Tech body and vehicle cameras. So we could probably do that all together.
Yeah, so our next meeting is November thirteenth. So I think, uh, the quote that you all provided is, is good through the end of November. So that should give us enough time to, to be able to talk about it a little bit and then take action.
Yeah, with the recommendation, which I'm sure there's gonna be, I'm looking at this, but just to make sure we follow the proper, uh, procedures that Yeah, with the recommendation, which I'm sure there's going to be, I'm looking at this, but just to make sure we follow the proper procedures that were set up. Uh, I don't see it having any problem even expedite it at that point if they have a recommendation, just get it right on the agenda, get it passed, get it done.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we could, we could do it on the thirteenth, brief it on the eighteenth and then you know, have this done by the twenty-sixth, probably. I mean, that timeline seems reasonable.
Commissioner Trask, do you have any comment?
I'm just looking at the calendar. Um, so your meeting's when?
Uh, it's November thirteenth.
It's actually November seventeenth.
That's a Sunday, so I don't plan on being there if that's the case. My bad, I'm on October, Jennifer.
I figured.
Diane's on, now we're all in trouble. You had to do it, Kevin.
I need the IT committee as much as anybody. I don't know how to
November ten, we meet with IT, so yeah, we could brief it the fifteenth, it'll go on the November twenty-third agenda.
I was there in spirit.
Yep. Commissioner Trask, are you supportive?
Yeah, I like Diane's dates a lot better than Saturday the thirteenth.
I just noticed that if you're watching the, my job is to uh one of the means to watch everybody in the chair. As soon as she pops on, everybody sets up just a little taller. Okay, uh Cheryl.
Great, great quote and and it's probably going to move forward, but I, you know, with the new committee organization and things, I think it's it's good that we start using that IT, IT committee because we got a bunch of big brains on that committee, so the more
Well, and it definitely helps us to be able just to be okay to purchase things that we don't know what we're talking about. What it goes on there. This year, I think we could have done, but at the same time, it's important that we follow the procedures that we set forward, or we can't expect anybody to, so. Cheryl, are you comfortable with that?
Okay, so as I understand it, in November tenth, IT meeting, November eighteenth briefing and November twenty-third
November fifteenth.
Fifteenth briefing, sorry, I made my own writing. Uh, November fifteenth briefing and then uh November twenty-third action.
Yeah, the chances are on the fifteenth, you're not going to have to do nothing more than just if even show, uh the the committee will have a a supportive recommendation that just moves on to agenda.
So if if we order, we're going to be able to get it in by the end of the year? Four weeks?
No, that's the problem. Yeah, that's the issue.
Okay, so um that's the only issue I can see is being able to get it in by the end of the year and pay it out of this five oh nine two money, so it would, if we can't get it in by the end of the year, then we'd have to take it out of twenty twenty-two funds.
Does it have to be purchased by the end of the year or received by the end of the year?
Well, part of the problem is at the same time, as the new law comes into effect on January one, that requires audio and video recording of all custodial interviews and interrogations. And this purchase of this equipment is to come into compliance with that new legislation. And it's, I talked to the rep and had them come out and do the onsite to get us the quote. It's going to be a couple day installation process at both locations because we're having a system put in here um in the main courthouse as well as one installed at the North Precinct in Belfair.
So would would the um wo- would the, is it is a interim potential solution with whatever time there might be in between? Would the body cameras suffice as the as a recording device to be used in these situations?
Yes.
So Diane, oh, she went off.
You still listen? She looks behind everything.
I'm still here, yeah.
If I can ask, I believe county policy states that we have to have that equipment received by the end of the year. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, as far as the funding though, if you're actually bringing in new revenue and Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but that can be carried forward into the next budget. If it comes down to we haven't paid for it in this year, but the meeting, the letter of the law and then the having the equipment is probably more of the issue.
Yeah, it's it's money that's already been received by the county, so we got two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars plus from for this this five oh nine two legislation. So we're trying to, trying to use it up in the year in which it was received.
Right, and that can be carried forward though if it's not actually expended this year. That's just a budgeting item that Jennifer can track. I'm, I guess I'm more interested in why is it sole source?
The reason for the sole source is because we've already, it's the same company that we purchased the body cameras and the in-car video system. And the storage of the of the data is going to integrate with that system that we've already purchased. We wouldn't have to go out and then purchase another server or additional storage because it's all from GTAC solutions. It integrates already with the equipment that we currently do have.
And no other company but integrate like that, I take it?
That is correct.
Okay.
Are you comfortable with that?
As far as the sole source, yeah, we always have to be careful on sole source because it can't just be because it's more convenient or anything. It has to be because it truly is the only equipment that will do that job.
Yeah, and you know, there may be others that can, but it it's never going to mesh up as good as to having the actual company that you're already dealing with. If it's possible.
So, you know, we actually, we talked about situations like this a little bit at the last IT Steering Committee meeting where you know, there might be um, you know, a little bit of flexibility um and just asking for TJ to kind of vet them and then make a recommendation. Um, I don't know, Diane, if you think this is a situation where that would be appropriate or?
I think it would, and I wanted to ask, has there been any discussion with IT about how this does integrate and impacts IT at all?
Well, let me, let me uh get in there if you can hear me, this is Jason.
Yes, we can.
So the body camera system, the car camera system and this interview room system all are on the same platform and work together. Uh, from the get-go, I've been working with county IT on the body cam and the car cam. I never even thought about bringing them in on the IT system. It's just one computer system to to upload uh um it wasn't a a big concept or a big changer idea.
I think one of the areas that we had to have some additional clarity on, and I I think we got this, but was with records um requests from like the prosecutor's office and where that would live on, what server that would live on, whether it would be the GTAC cloud or if it would be on our our servers and and the space components of that. Would this be, would this be similar in that way that there might be some?
All this is is like another body camera for the interview rooms. Seriously, all it does is it feeds right back into the system that we've already paid for and got and it'll all get stored onto the cloud. So we're not impacting county IT in any way in that concept.
You know, uh, the only thing I'd ask you, we've had, we've all been doing so great together, but it sounds to me like there was a request to have you guys come in and 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 meet with them uh in the future, because I have a feeling we're going to to support this right now, but uh when we have those opportunities to meet with those organizations, we really need to make them happen because these new committees and things that we've set up is what keeps things moving smoothly. And even though it might be a little bit of a pain to have to attend these things, it'd be beneficial in the long run. So when we have the the chance, we have to do it first. And if we decide to move forward on this today, just please keep that in mind for any other thing that we do with IT, just to throw it through them, so we can uh stick with our process. That's one of the things I'm asking. Commissioner Shutey, are you, because of the specific situation and you're representing us on the IT committee, I guess I'm asking your permission for a a yes to go through and just have uh our one staff member.
Yeah, I think, you know, if uh Chief, if you just make make that conversation happen with with TJ, I think we could probably move forward given the the time constraints. Um, that that's the only issue.
It'll be done in five minutes.
Okay, Commissioner Trask, are you comfortable with this also?
Oh, yeah.
So I, that's what we're going to do. Uh, thank you guys for all that hard effort on it. And we, you know, we'll work through this on the next one so that we can get it done. Uh, we'll try and have a little more time with each other.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Diane, which uh action agenda can we get on?
Um Commissioners, if TJ and Chief tragically talked today, it's okay, can we put it on tomorrow's agenda, the twenty-sixth?
I'm comfortable because it'll give them the time that's needed to get this thing done. Commissioner Shutey?
Uh, yeah, that's fine.
Commissioner Trask, yep, she's shaking, she's got American for yes going over there. So that's what we'll do. If you can handle it today and get a hold of him immediately, we'll get right past this and get it on our agenda. Try to do it, he said he's going to call now. If we get it done immediately, then we could easily do it, but we have staff that are going to be waiting to have that information to make sure it's on the agenda.
Yes, he just left. I think he's going to call TJ.
Good.
I believe so right now, and I think that's all I have.
Hey, uh, do we have anything for the Sheriff's Department? You're in none. Uh, thank you very much, Cheryl. You have a great day, guys.
You too.
Okay, next up. I have the Auditers' Office and Patty McGuire. Good morning, Patty.
Good morning Commissioners, how are you?
Incredible.
So uh, my role in this is going to be very brief. Uh, this is the recommendation from your uh committee that I staffed to draft a redistricting plan uh for the county commissioner districts. We have two uh members of the committee here online. Um, Pete Buttigieg who served as the Chair and Linda Prado, uh, one of the four voting members are both on, and I'll just pass the ball to Pete to uh discuss their recommendation.
Morning, Pete.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is Pete Buttigieg and for the clerk of the board. My address is two nine zero East Fern Creek Road, Shelton. And Mr. Chair, if you're ready, I'll give a very brief report.
Please.
Well, um, first of all, I'm the chair. The four members of the board are John Pydy, who was not with us today. John is out volunteering on another project. Linda Prado, who is with us, as well as Bob Rogers and Phil Wilson, who maybe haven't joined us yet. Uh, the committee, uh formal title, Mason County Redistricting Citizens Advisory Committee's Recommendation to the Commission for future commission districts until the next bicentennial US Census is that the existing commission district boundaries be retained? That was unanimous vote of the board. In your briefing packet is a short uh Excel spreadsheet showing the percentage difference uh which is really pretty small. The largest district is uh yours, Mr. Chair, District One, which is actually uh two point four nine six six percent over the ideal, rounded to two point five.
You're all in trouble now, guys.
I'll entertain any questions.
Uh, I, I'll go with questions first before I was going to make a comment. Questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, just a quick question um for Pete. Pete, thanks for uh coming in and joining us this morning in the report. Um, can you talk a little bit about um public comment that may have been um solicited and received on the proposals or any of that part of the process?
Yes, sir, I can, Commissioner. Uh, we actually reached out to uh both the Indian nations, the Skokomish and the Squaxon. Uh, the members of the board met with um the Skokomish Tribal Council and presented what was going on, asked them for input. We reminded them again just a few weeks ago by letter that went to the tribal um chair as well as their chief administrator and the legal counsel. And we have received no comment from the Skokomish. As related to the Squaxon tribe, um we weren't able to schedule a meeting with them that worked for their convenience. Patty McGuire reached out to the tribal council chair who indicated that they were comfortable with the boundaries as proposed. Beyond that, we sadly had no members of the public attend our meetings and we had no members of the public attend our Zoom meeting for a public hearing to get comments, so our draft recommendation became our final recommendation to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trask, do you have any comments or questions? Sorry.
I have lots of comments. Um, as far as questions, I know that that um you guys put in hours and 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 uh appreciate all of those hours and your your input. Um, it also makes it a lot cheaper for us because no, no more printing. We're going to keep with what we have, so thanks.
I never thought about that. Uh Chairman Buttigieg, do you mind if I invite uh your, I see two of your members on here now uh to make a comment if they'd like?
Go ahead.
Uh, let's start with Linda. Linda, do you have anything you'd like to add? You're on, you're on mute, Linda. It's okay.
Okay, um, I really don't have much to add. It felt like the the discrepancies were so minute between the the um districts and everything else that we would need to look at uh would have, you know, possibly created a lot larger problems. Uh, so after we spent some time talking about all of the other districts and the boundaries, it really felt like what we had and what you have seemed like the best alternative at this point.
Thank you very much. Uh, any uh questions of Linda?
Oh, big thank you.
Uh, Bob, you mind uh pop on for a second? Do you have any comments you'd like to to make?
Oh, I'm going to just stay on audio. You hear me fine?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just agree with Linda. You know, we all looked at the numbers and it just didn't seem reasonable to do much moving, especially when a lot of the district lines were coincident with school districts, PUDs. Um, and the other thing that I always think about is um, the numbers are accurate, relatively accurate, they're not exact, and they've changed already, so it has spent a lot of effort. You know, trying to pin it beyond what we did, it just seemed like a lot of extra costs, a lot of extra effort. Um, and just left things the way they are, which seems appropriate.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for uh Bob?
Another few.
Chairman Buttigieg, is there anybody else on here that I'm missing?
There is not. My closing comment, Mr. Chair, is to the extent that this is a successful recommendation and goes well, the committee deserves the credit. To the extent that maybe it runs afoul of something, I'll stand up.
It's all your fault.
Okay.
Okay, uh, now time for uh comments. Uh, I'll start just by saying thank you so much for your hard work. Uh, it looks like we're five hundred forty-seven away from perfection. Uh, you can't get much better than that with the population we have. I think you guys did a wonderful job and consistency is an important thing when possible, allowing people to to remain with what they already know it. That just makes all perfect sense in the world. I I'm so glad you guys thought outside the box and went for simplicity rather than perfection. Commissioner Trast?
Oh, looks pretty perfect to me and and I think it's 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 interesting to see the thought process. You know, you 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 look at all the other districts too, not just the county districts, but the school districts, the PUDs and things like that. So I think you guys did an amazing job and appreciate the time that you put in. Uh, I think you guys did great, so thank you.
Commissioner Shutey?
Yeah, special thanks to everybody who served on the on the committee. Um, I think uh it seems like it was a smooth and successful process and um appreciate you stepping up and doing this work for the community. Um also, thanks to uh Auditor McGuire, you and your staff for facilitating this process and getting it done quickly and um, just appreciate all the effort.
So uh, uh, Mr. Auditor, uh, so the next step would be for us to put it on our agenda and pass it? Is that accurate?
Uh, this may be, uh, ten years ago, there was a resolution, um, eleven dash fifty-two, I believe, was the resolution adopting the lines. Um, I think something similar to that. Um, I can get with Diane and figure out the details. We have until December thirty-one to finalize everything, so we're not in any sort of panic mode, but um I'll get with Diane and figure out exactly steps forward.
I appreciate that. And so Diane, if we did it that way in the past, uh, it sounds like we don't need an actual hearing?
I'm not sure. When I read the RCW, because we did create the redistricting committee and they did hold their own process, I don't know if that meets and they did hold their own process, I don't know if that meets the requirements in the law, or if we still need to, as a commission, now take the recommendation of that committee and have our own hearing. And it's kind of hard when you read the law on which group it applies to, but we'll check with Whitehead if nothing else to make sure we get it done.
Okay, I was going to say, just to make sure, because we're doing the things every other week. You know, that brings out quite a ways. I'm okay with if Tim Whitehead says we need a meeting, I'm okay with putting on the agenda tomorrow to set the date. Commissioner Shute, I see your head nodding. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think that's that's good. Get it in the queue if we need to.
Okay, Commissioner Trask, yep, same with her. So, yeah, let's let's double check with Tim. If we do need a hearing, we'll put her on the agenda for tomorrow to actually set the date for the hearing. Although I got to admit, I'm trying to think this thing out. You know, a citizen can say a lot, but what are we going to do? We're going to redraw the lines? We don't know how that would work, but a hearing's a hearing, and if it's required, it's required. So we'll see what it is. All right, so for all of you who stepped up to do this again, we're very, very appreciative of you, and thank you very much for stepping up and doing this. We know it took a lot of time, a lot of effort. And anytime you take anything like this on, you also take a chance of getting yelled at by somebody, but it sounds like everything went pretty smooth this time. So thank you. Thank you very much for everything you did, and we'll know more by the next meeting what we're going to do.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can just add, I mean, the committee was really great to work with and and spent a lot of time and effort on this, and so my hats off to them also.
Wonderful. Okay, do we have anything else for the auditor's office? Do you have anything else? Oh, go ahead.
Tis the season.
Do you have anything else for us, Patty?
Nope, that's it.
All right, then we thank you very much. You guys have a great day. So commissioners, next up is, we have some time. But let's take a little bit of a break, and we'll go into our executives or a closed session a little early if we can. I don't see Frank on your Frank. The closed session, can you do it earlier?
Yes, I can open it up.
And the same with the executive?
Yep, they would be one back to back.
Okay, so how much time do we think we need? For the.
Twenty to twenty-five minutes max.
For both combined?
Combined.
Okay, so we'll do twenty-five minutes. So ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a five minute break, and at ten forty, we will move into our closed session for twenty-five minutes, so it'll be eleven oh five. Yep, eleven oh five. Before we, actually, before we do it, commissioners, do you have any commission discussion? Let's get that out of the way now. Commissioner Trask, nope. So then we will come back and we're not expected to take any action, right?
No.
Okay, so we will be back at eleven oh five after the close of the closed session and the executive session. I'll see everybody there.
Thank you.